I'll call to order the regular session of the Council of the City of Bisbee, Cochise County, State of Arizona, held this Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017, at 7:00 PM in the Bisbee Municipal Building, 118 Arizona Street, Bisbee, Arizona. Called to order by Mayor Pro Tem Douglas Dunn, in place of Mayor Smith, who is out of town. Want to call the roll?
Sure. Councilmember Brianna Klein, Councilmember Joan Hansen.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor David Smith is excused, Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Douglas Dunn.
Here.
Councilmember Gabe Lindstrom.
Here.
City staff, Robert Smith, interim city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Andy Heratic, public works director, George Castillo, interim fire chief, Britt Hanson, city attorney.
Thank you for invocation. I think we want to extend our condolences to the family of Terry Wolf, who passed away yesterday.
Yesterday?
Musician and beloved person. Also, a moment of silence and reflection in terms of the horrific shooting in Las Vegas. And so we'll pause a moment for contemplation. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I have a proclamation for Rural Communities of Arizona Day in Bisbee, Arizona. Whereas, the city of Bisbee is proud to be a rural community in the state of Arizona, offering our unique rural way of life to the fabric of the state. And whereas rural Arizona communities represent 25% of the state's 6.4 million population, with a wide variety of cultures, traditions, and histories. And whereas rural Arizona contributes $29 billion to the overall state of Arizona's gross domestic product. And whereas the topography of Arizona is enriched by the diversity and landscape from the Grand Canyon to the Sueroa National Park, from agricultural fields to snow cap peaks. And whereas the people of rural Arizona are proud to perform key leadership roles throughout the state, benefiting not only the rural communities, but the state as a whole. And whereas from statehood, Arizona's economy has benefited through significant, specific economic development opportunities, unique tourism attractions, connections to higher education through our three state universities. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Douglas Dunn, Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Bisbee, do hereby proclaim October 3rd, 2017, as Rural Communities of Arizona Day in Bisbee, Also, in terms of announcements or comments, I just want to applaud the Mexican Federal Police Orchestra a week ago Thursday. It was just spectacular. I mean, it was an unbelievable event. And I want to thank certainly Tom Woody and Bisbee High School for opening up the auditorium, as well as the cafeteria for those individuals, as well as Jean Lurie and David Smith, and of course, the mayor's staff and Aguaprieta for putting, help us put this together. Certainly, we had the first ever flash mob in the history of Bisbee, which was quite an event. A person came up to me afterwards and says, "Why doesn't Bisbee have this every week?" He says, so.
Why not?
It certainly fits. And certainly, this is a relationship, I think, we're developing with Mexico. They could have held this event anywhere, and they chose to do it here. And certainly reflects, again, our kind of offshoot of the Snor Fest and this developing relationship with Snor and with Mexico. So I applaud everyone who was involved there. Called to the public, I believe we have one. Michael McFarland. Let's see, let's see, is that right for the general call to the public or not?
Yes.
Okay, good. Michael.
Okay. Good evening, council members. My name's Michael McFarland. I live at 536C Warren Hill, street in old Bisbee. And I just wanted to encourage you to look at ways to increase participation in our commissions. I serve on two currently, the Design Review Board and Planning and Zoning. And I know we all value the diversity that's in our community, and I would just encourage you to consider ways that really embrace that diversity in a more structural, intentional way. I know there's sometimes challenges getting people to volunteer to serve on commissions. I certainly have enjoyed my experience on the two that I serve on. But more specifically, I'd love to see us really show our embracing of diversity in terms of both gender and ethnic diversity of our committees, so, and first time people who want to serve on committees. So looking at ways structurally to be able to enforce that, or to encourage that, I think might encourage more folks in our community to actually volunteer.
And thank you for your example. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now I move on to general business, the council payables.
Call to the public.
I thought you were registered here for item three.
Radiant, call to the public, item three in consent agenda.
Okay. Marie Minor.
Hi, Marie Minor. I live in the Briggs neighborhood. Since I live alone with two cats, well, I'm attempting a third one, I don't give up my address since I'm a single woman. I'm here because I haven't been here in a long time, and I need some catching up. So I'll be the first to admit that I don't understand why I look in the expenses and I see things like a shredder for almost $900, expenses for lodging, and things like that. It's because I've been out of town, I don't know what those expenses were. And so I would like to meet with the finance department sometime, and I'm going to make arrangements to do that. But I do encourage people to look. This is the first time I've ever gotten a printout, and one person helped me get a printout of what all the expenses were, and I'm going to try and get one in the future so I can have a better understanding of money spent. Another thing I'm going to attempt to do is to meet with the city manager, the pro tem city manager. I've made three attempts, three requests so far. I don't know what the problem is, other than I know you were out of town recently, so that was part of the scheduling issue. But I made requests prior to your even being selected, and I guess that didn't get to you. I have some business ideas, some ideas that would get businesses to fill up Alco Spot, to fill up other places at what we call our Safeway Plaza. And so that's why I'd like to leave, meet with the city manager and the mayor at the same time, if they could spare a time to do that. Lastly, I just want to point out, David Smith, our mayor, did a TV spot, and thanks to a friend of mine in Tucson, he alerted me to it. It was in regard to the methamphetamine and issues that we have with drugs here. And I would like to point out that PBS did a special that same day on, and they're doing it the entire week, on drugs all around the country. So if you have a chance to listen to PBS, please do. And I want to point out specifically that in Huntington, West Virginia, I'll repeat that, Huntington, West Virginia, they are doing some remarkable issues of, instead of incarcerating people, as we did when I was on the grand jury last year, I would say at least 60% of the cases that came up in front of us last year were drug cases. Instead of putting people in jails, they have a recovery program, and they're having much more success with that. It saves money, and it helps turns people's lives around, instead of ruining the history of felonies. Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Isn't that short? You didn't have to kick me off this time. Only.
Thank you. Accounts payable?
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $127,529.43.
Second. Are there any questions or comments?
Again, I have a question on, I was adding up some of these. I just have a problem when it just says lodging. I mean, and it's on like five different pages, and it's on the same day, and a lot of them, and it's, you know, $2,000. Just maybe more specific of what and why, you know? Just a brief, somebody here for the hotel, or it's just so easy to say lodging, we don't know what it is, you know? That's my only thing on this one.
Good point. All in favor then, I guess this is just a, is it a roll call vote or no? Okay. All in favor then of paying accounts payable in the amount of $127,529.43. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carry unanimously. No, move the consent agenda, and we do have two individuals who wish to speak on the consent agenda, but I'll read the three items that we have. A, approval of the appointment of Peter Goffe to the Design Review Board. B is approval and appointment of Philip Martinez to the Committee on Disability Issues and a waiver of number of commissions served. And C, approval of a special event liquor license applications submitted by the Bisbee Hospital Association for an event to be held at the St. Stevens Church Hall. How do you pronounce? Help me here. Serbian church?
Come on in.
Serbian Church Hall at 216 Park Avenue, Bisbee, on Saturday, December 9th, 2017, from 4:00 PM to midnight. Dennis Kallas applicant. I have two individuals who have asked to speak from the public. Donna Polling.
My name's Donna Polling. I live at 708 Tombstone Canyon in Bisbee. And I wanted to also speak about the appointments to commissions in trying to encourage a little more diversity. Gender diversity is one of the things that I noticed. With this appointment today, there will be, the Design Review Board will be an all-male commission. And I was prompted to look at the other 24 commissions today, to see what the composition of those commissions are. And three of the 24 have more females than males. And you might suspect they would be more service commissions. One is the Arts Commission, one is the Library Board, and the other is the Cemetery Commission. So I would hope that there would be some kind of policy of encouraging more diversity, racial and gender diversity, on our commissions. And I know it's hard to find people who would like to serve on commissions, and so perhaps establishing some kind of a procedure that is encouraging people, the council people requesting, or the mayor going out and requesting people, knowing what the composition of these commissions are. Now perhaps we can encourage a little more diversity in those commissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie Minor.
Thank you, city council. This one will be short and sweet. I have nothing personally against Philip Martinez. I'm not even sure I know who he is. But he's applying to be on the Disabilities Commission. And thank God, we know we need people on that commission, that's not the issue. But when, I just want to point out, in filling out an application to say, "See resume," and then not even ever stating why he wants to be on it, what could he contribute to it, the only thing that I saw in his whole history, which was very diverse, the gentleman has a lot of jobs, just like me, you know, 10,000 jobs to get to the one you really wanted. But the only one that had any relationship to disabilities was the three years he spent in which he, just a second, glasses off, in which he was, for SEIU, a home care worker in El Monte, California, where he did home health care. So he probably ran into people with disabilities. Other than that, being a photographer, court runner, gardener, et cetera, didn't have much application. We are desperate to have people on the commissions, but it would really be nice to know, is Philip here? I invite you, Philip, to call me. My name's Marie Minor, M-I-N-O-R. I'm in the phone book. Would you just tell me why you would like to be on the Disabilities Commission? There was nothing in your paperwork, you didn't fill that out at all, other than that you filled out the paperwork. Okay, just a request.
Does any council member wish to make comment or remove an item? Do I have a motion then for approval of the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda, items A through C.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, indicate aye.
Aye.
Approve unanimously. New business? Item three, discussion and possible approval of resolution R-1711 to accept the 2017 Hazard Mitigation Plan as written by Cochise County. Andy Heratic.
Mayor, Pro Tem Mayor, council, it's good to be here. Thank you. The Hazard Mitigation Plan, this is our second year to submit a hazard mitigation plan. We submit the hazard mitigation plan to Cochise County, and this, and then from there, it's handed off to FEMA. So with the hazard mitigation plan, just so you know what we're up to, is FEMA calls and they ask you, what keeps you up at night? And I list those things, and there are fires, landslides, tunnels that would cave in, floods, drainage issues. Those are all things that are on our hazard mitigation plan. There's two words here, one's hazard and one is mitigation. So the second one, then they ask you, what are you doing about these things? And we don't do much about landslides or earthquakes, or tunnels that collapse, but I list them, and there's not much I can do about those, but the things I can do, something about, like maybe flooding and drainage ways, we actually take care of those. So then we list on that plan what we're doing and how many hours a year that we're putting into that. So this is a plan, basically to ensure that in the event of a natural catastrophe, when FEMA shows up, they know that we have identified what our weaknesses are, where they are, and what we've done to mitigate those problems.
Are there questions from, comments from council?
So who puts the plan together?
So I put the plan together for the city, and then the county, and then the county then takes all those plans from all the different cities and the county, and then they submit that as one master plan to FEMA.
Councilperson Hanson?
Public Works usually does it, is that, that's who usually addresses that.
Is, and it has to be approved by FEMA, correct?
Yeah. What happens then is we submit our hazard mitigation plan, it then goes to FEMA, and then it's approved. It's automatically approved if we hand it in.
How, how long is the plan? I mean, because we didn't, we didn't have it, you know, we could review it in City Hall.
The plan's updated every year. This is the second year that I've updated the plan. So what I do is I, we take what's on the plan, and then I update what we've done or what we haven't done. I added things this year.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions, comments? Marie Minor, do you want to speak?
It was just a short question.
Okay. May I ask?
It's pretty much similar to what Joan said. I looked through all the paperwork, trying to find some content, some substance to what this mitigation plan was, and thought that maybe because I've missed a few meetings being out of state, that maybe you folks had seen it and knew what it was about. I hope that the city council doesn't have to vote on something they've never seen. How does one get a hold of reading this plan?
Go online to Cochise County, and you'll find the hazard mitigation plan.
Further questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve resolution R-1711 to accept the 2017 Hazard Mitigation Plan as written by Cochise County.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. A roll call vote?
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Councilmember Hansen.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunn.
Aye.
Councilmember Lindstrom.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Item four, discussion and possible approval to purchase a pump from Bestway Electric Motor Service Company, et cetera, Incorporated, for the San Jose wastewater treatment plant as an emergency replacement. Total cost is $5,107.46. Mr. Heratic.
Yes, this is, as you know, our clarifier pumps went out about three months ago. We in fact lost every pump in the clarifier. And this is more of our plan. We, if you look at the back of this packet, you'll also see an agenda item, or not an agenda item, but what we're doing is we're keeping you appraised, is what we're doing as we make these repairs at the plant. So this is, we've now repaired all the pumps, and now we have a replacement for part of our backup. And one of the things I talk about constantly is two and a half times backup at the wastewater plant. So this is the first step in that clarifier for our backup. This is a rebuilt pump. I will be coming to you shortly with a brand-new pump as another backup.
Is that going to be an emergency request also, or is that going to be a regular request?
No, the backup wouldn't be an emergency request. The backup will just be, that'll be a, and that's a $33,000 item.
Oh, I thought this one was the backup.
This is one step of our two and a half times redundancy. There are, I have four pumps that I have to be concerned about. So this is a rebuilt. Now, we had a rebuilt in there, and that's what failed last time. But I will be coming back to you with a brand-new pump, because as I said, we lost all of our pumps in two weeks. So I need to have, I'll be coming to you with a brand-new backup pump.
Further questions in council, or comments in council?
I just have one comment, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but since it's an emergency buy, then it's, even though it's over 5,000, it just needs to be approved by the city manager and not by the council.
Yes, and all that paperwork.
Just so that people understand that.
And that paperwork's included. The truth is, this has been purchased. It was an emergency.
Right.
And what we're doing today is we're showing you that we had this emergency purchase, and this is, we made the emergency purchase, and then we included with you, we included with you other paperwork that we've created for pre-purchase. So this is just to keep you appraised on what's going on. This stuff has already been purchased and bought, it's in place, and it's all working right now, so.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of a pump from Bestway Electric Motor Service Company, Incorporated, for the San Jose wastewater treatment plant as an emergency replacement. Total cost is $5,107.46.
Is there a second?
A second, ma'am.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor, indicate aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry unanimously.
Thank you, council.
Agenda item five, which has been added here, discussion and possible direction to city attorney as to attorney general investigation regarding the plastic bag ordinance 01314. Britt Hanson, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Everyone is aware, of course, that Senator Peterson from Mesa, acting under SB 1487, as a single, allowing a single legislator to refer a matter to investigation to the Attorney General's office on grounds that the city ordinance allegedly violates state law. And that ordinance, of course, is the plastic bag ban ordinance. So we have, the Attorney General is given by statute 30 days to conclude their investigation and reach a conclusion. That's a pretty tight timetable, and the Attorney General does not believe that he has the discretion to extend that time, because it's in statute, unlike in court actions where they would, you know, commonly extend time if they needed more time to do something, but they feel they're, they're bound by the statutory 30 days. So everything is going to be moving pretty quickly here. The referral by Senator Peterson was made on September 28th. We're invited to respond, of course, and will be responding. But in any event, to want to, before doing that, wanted to talk to the council about the response, and also do contingency planning in the event the Attorney General does conclude that the plastic bag ban ordinance does violate state law. So I would like to give that advice to the council in executive session, because it will involve legal strategy, which would be appropriate in executive session.
Okay, do you have one call to the public? Jenny Druckmann.
I'm Jenny Druckmann, live on West Vista Street. Clearly, the ban works. Who wants to go back to litter? Phoenix, you can't make us go back. I just feel like at this time in history, we need to stand up whenever and wherever we can for what we know is right, what's right for the earth, even if special interests or bag manufacturers push back. Even if our president withdraws from the Paris Accord, we know we all need to move forward and do that in whatever small way we can. So I do just hope that we take this on, say that we should be allowed to handle our trash, not have trash, do whatever we want. This is our city, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is it not appropriate at this point to talk about what potential costs are for public awareness?
That's all going to be part of the legal strategy. Now, if the council, after the executive session, wants to make that public, then you, we can discuss that in the executive session, but because it affects, or could affect legal strategy, I'd prefer to do that in executive session.
Okay. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
I move to enter into executive session for discussion and consultation with our city attorney for legal advice and possible litigation.
A second.
All in favor, indicate aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
So everyone in the council session stays.
I move that we come out of the executive session.
Second. Second. All in favor, indicate aye.
Aye.
Negative, no. Okay. I believe the recommendation of council is, and I'll make the motion, I move to direct city attorney to proceed as recommended in executive session.
Second.
Can I take a vote then? All in favor, signify aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay, one vote. For a little bit of clarification, this indicates that the council is committed to defending the bag ban, no matter what the Attorney General decides, and that we are instructing our attorney to retain Tim Hogan from the Arizona Center of Law in the public interest.
Yay.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, we got, we got the big man first.
We left all last night preparing for this.
Well, we wanted to end on applause.
That wasn't great?
I just wanted to give folks a quick overview of some of the work that's ongoing here at City Hall. We currently have a sewer issue at Naco. There's sewage coming through the border, and congressional folks have now gotten interested in it. And attention at the state and federal levels are being focused on the area. When that surfaced, I talked with the mayor and with Andy about Bisbee being a facilitator of a solution. We're a small local government, and so the amount of regulation over us is smaller than the regulation over the state and the Fed. And we can be a little more agile in delivering a solution. It also may be an opportunity for the city of Bisbee to receive some resources that would allow us to improve some of our own infrastructure. And so I laid out this structure to the mayor and Andy. Our current plant, when it rains, soaks up rainwater. We do not have a well-sealed collection system in Bisbee, it's very old. And we haven't smoked the lines and plugged up all the leaks yet. So when it rains, we receive a lot of rainwater at the wastewater treatment plant, there's not a lot of storage. And so there are times when we have a difficult, a difficult time containing those volumes, and we must. So there may be a way, if we were to receive flows from Naco, for us to build a detainment facility on the front end of the plant that would take Naco's flows and pretreat them to reduce some of the biological demand for treating their waste flow. It would give us an opportunity as well to meter the introduction of their waste flow into our biological process. If we built a facility like that, we would also be able to take septic hauling from folks who are out there pumping septic tanks. So there's some revenue flows that would come from that. We may get revenue from Naco, we certainly would get revenue from septic haulers, and the effluent that came from the Naco flows and the septic haulers flows, that effluent isn't coming from Bisbee's haulers flows, that effluent isn't coming from Bisbee's water. And so there may be less political stigma associated with providing that to the San Pedro to help support that, that watershed. There's also one other regulatory thing I want to chase down with ADEQ. Currently, if you're in an active management area for water, with Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, you get water rights or water credits for all of the volumes that you recharge. So if your wastewater treatment facility is set upright, you create percolation ponds, you put your effluent in the percolation ponds, and then you get water rights for the water that's percolating through your ponds. I don't think that there's a reason why the state would deny us water rights for discharging water volumes into the San Pedro. It's a protected habitat, and so the state has an interest in preserving that habitat. So I'd want to follow up with the state on seeing if we could receive water rights for doing that. Those water rights should be saleable, if we wanted to sell them, to other communities in Arizona that are in desperate need for water rights. I think if you look at maybe Buckeye, they're projected to quadruple in size over the next 10 to 15 years, and they don't have water. So they don't know how they're going to deal with that, and they know they're going to have to come up with water rights to do that. So there may be a market for that, or those water rights may stay within the city of Bisbee so that when you want to do a project, you already have the water rights to be able to do that. Or you have water rights that you could offer as an incentive for economic development. So those are a couple of ideas I want to chase down with Andy's help through the state and Naco. Excuse me. So if we were going to go to the trouble to do this, and we had an active partner in the, the state of Sonora that might be funding this construction work, we need some things at our plant. We either need to update the UV treatment facility or add chlorination to our plant as an alternative. The HUBR screen that's on the front end of the plant needs to be expanded and improved. And I've already addressed the management of the stormwater flows. I think we might want to look at extending sewer service to the airport. They have hangar space and industrial class property there, and with a very small amount of investment, we could get a gravity line from the airport over to the plant. There's also lands in and around the Border Patrol area that the city has begun to contemplate annexation of, and it may be possible for us to extend additional sewer collection lines to those areas as well, hopefully to make them a little more viable. So that's being discussed. A week before last, I was out last week. I haven't had a lot of time to follow up yet. Financial planning, it's time for us, we, we've done a lot of staff-based projects where we're looking at what we can do organizationally to buy ourselves some breathing room and create some efficiency and some stability in our operations. We, we need to begin to look at financial planning. A five-year plan is ideal. You guys have already been through a process to create a base for that. It needs to be updated based on your experience and, and this coming budget. I think in the end, your financial plan needs to accommodate some additional thoughts that we know that we're going to encounter in the next five years. So the creation and deployment of a compensation and classification plan, where you identify your job descriptions and you create the market-based pay that should exist across those systems, and how you're going to fund getting your people from where they are today into conformity with that plan, that needs to be part of your financial planning. Financial analysis of the EMS mission, I know that we receive revenues. We have not been able to nail down yet exactly where we stand with that, and we should know. We should know so that we could deploy appropriate upgrades in equipment, and it will give us information on how we need to strategize hiring personnel and structuring our personnel. The same thing stands for police and fire, those staffing strategies, how many more senior officers you have versus younger officers, what you're paying those folks, whether or not you're using overtime, to what degree you're using overtime, with which staff you're using overtime on. All of those things affect your liability with PSPRS. And so we would want to optimize the stra, staffing strategy with the chiefs to make sure they get what they need, but we're also presenting the least increase in PSPRS liability that we can. It, it needs to be managed. Short and long-term impacts of that liability need to be accommodated in the plan, whether or not you decide to refinance that amortization and spread it out over even more time. I, I've got someone that has agreed to come in and at no cost, take a look at our debt structure. His name is Mark Reader. He works with Stifel. He's fairly famous here in Arizona for the work that he's done with Communities for Bonds and, and things like that. I'm going to try and get him in next week or so to take a look at our debt structure. And the software and technology deployment's not going to be cheap. We have issued kind of a first cut of what our needs are from a staffing perspective in terms of getting the work done, but from an information control and security side, we have no analysis. We don't know how big that dollar sign is. And we need to look at our physical security. We need to look at our software, the financial information that we manage on behalf of others. We need to look at our plants, the SCADA systems, our digital communications. There's a whole world of security out there we need to look at. It's very fortunate that the county's looking at the same thing right now. And so we'll be partnering up with them to try and leverage our efforts. We do need to talk about new revenue sources and updated fee structures and some projections within this plan with that information in it would be helpful. We need to find out whether or not council wants to engage in a sales tax audit. It's possible to bring in a third party to take a look at what your sales tax received experiences, and to look at the businesses within your community to find out if there's any dropouts. We did that regularly in Chino Valley. And then effective management of liens, past due and collections, we've begun that with the amnesty thing with sewer. We need to extend that view over to other debt that we manage. And then financial policies and procedures, I think you guys have looked at some draft language before. It, it's time for us to make those real and adopt them and base our financial planning on them. So in, in terms of financial management, there's some tools we need to create for our, our smooth operation and being able to pull a plan like this off. So creation of revenue and expenditure models, so we have cash flow modeling. I, I touched on the analysis of our debt structure. And then creation and deployment of our procurement process and our reporting on our procurement process. There's, there are questions about how we're spending our money, and we should be able to present all of the granular detail on expenses when council has a question about that. And it's not that those details don't exist, it's that under our current process, they're not all put together in the same place. So what we need to find is a better way for us to collect this information so it's more accessible. Payroll software will help us a little bit. And I've discovered some additional points of sale might help us in the, the short run, deal with customer service. We had somebody come through that was very upset about our impoundment costs. They had a vehicle impounded. And after it was described to me what you have to go through in order to get your car out of impoundment, I kind of understood why they were, you know, they go over to the police department, they find out their car's impounded, then they're steered back over here to make their payment, then they have to take their receipt back over to the police department. We need a way to make that a little easier on our public. And I believe we may have situations like that in other processes, so we need to take a look at that as well. So those are some of the things looking forward that we want to tackle. You guys already have kind of a list of the things that we have on our plate that we know that we're pursuing right now, and this is a little bit of a forward look on where we're headed. Are there any questions that you guys have about the slides?
Questions, comments in council?
What is the timeframe on the Naco project?
It's moving fast.
Approximately.
And we need to strike while the interest is there.
Right.
So Andy and I talked about that today. We'll be reaching out to ADEQ, and I'm hoping that they can be kind of a lead agency for us. We would like to be, I think, the local government that wants to help and pitch in, and we would, I think it would be good for a state agency to marshal that charge, because there's some thoughts from DC that the state side of things wasn't responsive to the complaints when they were first raised. So it may be beneficial for ADEQ to be able to play that role. And they know the players with the state and the federal government way better than we do. So I think our local intelligence on Naco and Sonora and the people to talk to there is very beneficial for us here on the ground at the front. But yes, sir, we did have that discussion today, and Andy's introducing me to folks at ADEQ that we need to be chatting with.
I also have a question on the sales tax audit. I know that there, that the state, at the state level, the people that deal with that, the numbers have been cut substantially. And so are they going to look at that portion of it also when they look at the audit, and not just the, the business owners that are providing the revenue?
I'm not sure I completely get the question.
Well, there's, there's a concern, at least I had a concern as to were we getting the money from the state that we should be getting, because the figures just weren't matching. And not because of any type of collusion or anything, but because they have so few people where mistakes being made.
I, I think that there's plenty of room for that. The allocation formulas sometimes are more based on population than you might think. And I have seen communities like La Paz where they actually sold more gas and generated more gas tax and got less because their population was low. And what that tells you is the state wants to take the transient person who's traveling through there and buying gas and send their money to Maricopa County.
Yeah, yeah.
But having a, a third party who is not associated with the state come in and look at the data, and then attempt to identify any businesses that have not been paying, and then presenting that to the state is the way that I would recommend that the council go. Because the state's in charge of administering all that now.
Right.
They took that authority away from everyone. And they have agreed what qualifications are necessary for a third-party CPA or evaluator to come in and do that. And the gentleman that I know from Chino Valley does work all over Arizona, well, I, I, he worked for us in Chino Valley, but he does work all over Arizona. But you could do a competitive process for that as well.
Other questions, comments?
Yeah, the effluent for the San Pedro, if I understood you correctly, you said that if, if, say we were to start taking on the sewage from Naco, and this is going to like go to bubbling tanks and, and produce, at that point, it produces more effluent that we, that we have. Right now, I know we have a contract with Freeport for a percentage of our effluent, and I think we just signed that, what, recently? And, and so any, any, you know, anything new that we would be doing with the effluent, I, I think that they, there was an offer of so much money and talk of building a pipeline. And so I think it would be contingent upon, you know, what the council decided at that point.
Oh, yes, sir. All of that is council's authority.
Yeah.
None of that is, is internal. We would be able to monitor and meter the flows coming from Naco, so we would know exactly how much waste we were receiving, and we would know exactly how much effluent is associated with that waste. In addition to just the holding lagoons on the front end of the plant to give some of this stuff time to work, we have talked about creating a concrete pad that would allow us to dry and winrow the solids that are pressed out of the effluent. And that should, should help us lower our tipping fee costs by removing additional water from those solids. And it would give us the opportunity to create composting material if the city so chose to do that at a later date. Thank you very much.
Further questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Now, have a motion?
I move that we adjourn.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.